All right. Good evening. I call the August third, two thousand and twenty-two Bremerton City Council meeting to order. The city council is conducting the me- the council meeting via Zoom and all council members and staff will be participating remotely. And we welcome attendees who have joined us tonight through any one of several options available. We encourage community involvement. First up, we have the mayor's report. Mayor Wheeler.
All right. Good, good evening, Council President, City Councilors. Nice to see you this evening. So I just have just a couple brief updates for you and we'll get right to the first one here. And the our beloved Art Deco Historic Art Deco Building, the Martin Luther King Junior Library, is undergoing a major renovation. So as you are well aware, since we have to, we don't move forward unless we have the support of the council, including the budget that often goes with the projects that we we propose. I just wanted to provide you an update that in about six to eight weeks, you'll you'll have a contract in front of you. And that will be to do substantial repairs of an outdated energy systems and heating and especially heating and cooling and ventilation. And so there's a, there's a lot of detail that'll be involved with this, including some redesign. But when we're finished, we'll have a beautifully restored main floor and a basement that can be used for meeting rooms and just community, community gatherings. So I just wanted to share this with you, Council. This is one of our, the gems of our downtown. And I appreciate your support and we are, we are moving full speed ahead. So again, in six to eight weeks, you'll have a contract in front of you. And we are ready to go. So we actually have been working within our capital facilities budget that we already have a set aside annually for this, for this building. And so we're prepped and ready to go. It'll be a pretty quick transition right into capital improvements, construction improvements. Right? Thank you, Council. Next slide, please. And just as I have been doing with you, I'm sharing some permit activity. As you can see, we're, we're at nine eleven for the year. We're right on, right on par with what we've done in the past few years. The valuations at fifty-two million is a little bit misleading. If you go down below the actual total approved, the actual pending is is a hundred and twenty-nine million. And so at this, you know, at this point in time, and if we were to project outwards to full completion of what we have already accomplished, the work we've already accomplished and what we actually are working on, it's in the queue. We have a total of a hundred and eighty-one million, which you can see is a pretty good number compared to a past. And it just shows, again, it shows investor confidence in our city. It shows, you know, obviously, when you're putting dollars out to create housing and other projects, you need to have confidence that people are going to buy them and and set up business if it's commercial space. So I'm proud of our, proud of the work, Council, proud of the staff's work to continue again to make us what I believe to be the most livable city in the Puget Sound region. So that concludes my report tonight, unless there's any questions.
I see Vice President Chamberlain has a question.
Hi, this is a really brief question, Mayor Wheeler. I'm just curious if with the MLK Library, if there will be like with the renovation. This sounds like infrastructure updates need to happen, but will there be an opportunity to display art to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Junior?
That, let's get started with that conversation right now, starting right here. And now, Counselor Chamberlain. I, I think that's a wonderful idea. And we can either, we can either work through our Arts Commission or if, and we probably have a representative that can relay that back, or we can work through the the library. I, I would hope that anybody that has an idea about displaying art would feel welcome to just present their art to us and or present an idea to commission an artist. And so more to come on that. And we'll, we'll work through that in the budget to see if this is what, what you're looking for. It'd be tough, though. I probably would ask the Arts Commission.
Absolutely.
Yeah, to go through a bunch of recommendations and ideas and on behalf of all of us, just make a a separate and independent decision on how to spend government dollars, if that's the way we go.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, thank you for that. I mean, I appreciate bringing that up.
Roosevelt Smith on the Arts Commission would be a really great person to start with on that conversation. I know he's, he's already started that conversation too. So thank you for your answer. I really appreciate it. That's it. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Super. Councilmember Muckler.
Thanks, President Goodell. Um, this is just a congratulations that I'm really looking forward to these improvements to a truly beautiful building. I was wondering if, if you or Public Works were aware of the Puget Sound Energy Incentive Grants for retrofits on your commercial facility, energy efficient, renewable sources, et cetera. I only know about these because I got lost looking for Manchester State Park and noticed that the Manchester Library had received of grants for solar panels on their roof. So I'm just asking about that.
I would, if you would send that to us, Counselor Muckler, any information you have, we will certainly take it under consideration.
I look forward to that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Goodell. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A Claims and Check Register, one check numbers three nine nine zero nine eight through three nine nine three two one, and electronic fund transfers V three five six one two through V three five six eight zero, and the grand total amount of three million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the amount of one million, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Three, regular payroll for payout for pay period ending July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the amount of three thousand, thirty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Four, retiree payroll for pay period ending July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and eight cents. B, minutes of meeting July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. C, minutes of study session July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. D, confirm reappointment of Beverly Kincaid to the Civil Service Commission. E, lease agreement between Kitsap County and City of Bremerton for the use of Bcat facilities. F, set annual compensation for the Bremerton Municipal Court Judge effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two. G, inter-agency agreements with Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts for therapeutic court. H, professional services agreement with KPG Somas Inc. for the West Kitsap Way Transportation Planning Study. And I supplemental agreement number four with Skilling's Inc. for the design of the Washington and Eleventh Street Roundabout Project. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any one of these items? Seeing none, we will go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Sorry, Quinn.
And.
Go ahead, Counselor Muckler. You're doing great.
So you finished the motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chamberlain.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion in a second. I called for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Coughlin.
Yes.
Dennehy.
Yes.
Muckler.
Yes.
Younger.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public recognition.
All right. As noted on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any city-related item that is not already listed on tonight's agenda. Please raise your hand to be recognized. We only ask that you state your name for use in the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Timer system will be used, so everyone is treated equally and fairly. With that, I open public recognition. Hey, IT, you've done something. I guess it's fine. I guess the is this supposed to be showing the timer? All right. We're going to recognize Joe Walter.
It'll show the time once somebody starts talking.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Joe Walter here, and I'm back to talk about the Martin Luther King Junior block. I think there are other voices who you've heard talk about the toilet and trash problem on that block. I've spoken to some of you about toilets, but it seems that the conversations just go right to the obstacles. We know what the obstacles are, but still we have a responsibility to the health and safety, if not just the people who are living behind Sally's, but to people passing through that neighborhood. There's health and safety issues for the entire community that needs to be addressed, and it is our responsibility to overcome the obstacles. The last time I spoke to the mayor about it, I went away saying that I personally was going to go and research how these obstacles have been overcome in other communities, wishing to be helpful, but I spoke too soon. It's just one project too many for me as a community volunteer. COVID closed my business, and what I'm doing to pay my mortgage now is a lot more time consuming than my previous work. There's my elderly mom and my disabled daughter who need my time, and it strikes me that it should not be the responsibility of already time-challenged community volunteers to come up with answers to problems that need a solution found in our community. We started and we're in the middle of organizing a solution-focused meeting with stakeholders. Whatever stakeholders means, people who need toilets, people who enforce toilet rules, people who want to serve others in our community. But I'm tired of, you know, like pulling the work of pulling together folks who want to have a meeting about finding solutions. Can you put some staff on this? Can you affirm that this is a problem that you are responsible for and that you're, you're working on? If folks will help and there are ideas, there are solutions, but right now it feels like it's just about political will. And the trash thing, I know you know that there was a crew of volunteers on MLK on Saturday doing a community give back, mostly about food and clothing. But while we were there, we found ourselves picking up a truckload overflowing with trash that would not fit in the dumpster. It's wonderful to supply a dumpster, but not if you don't haul it away. And it's, it's a bad look to have our community's teenage leaders bagging trash that the city hasn't called away. I, I, I look forward to working more on this with you and just reminding you that it is your work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Marwan Cameron.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. I also would like to talk about MLK. As Joe shared, we were down there on Saturday cleaning up around the dumpster. Apparently Waste Management will dump the dumpster, but will not dump the garbage that is around the dumpster. And as she said, it was a truckload of garbage. So it'd be nice to know when that trash is dumped and can it be emptied more frequently? In regards to the bathrooms, you know, I've been covering the city council meetings for the last month or so, but I haven't heard much discussion on solutions for downtown, even if they're temporary. Looking at the cost of one or two porta potties and, you know, an extra cleaning might run anywhere between fourteen thousand and twenty-two thousand dollars for a year. And to me, this seems like a good use of money. As many down there do not want those that are homeless to use their restrooms, and so they're not welcome there. Today, there was a gentleman who was incontinent and had to sit in his own feces and wait for an ambulance to come, which took a long time for that to happen. So I'm not sure what we're doing with our citizens and our neighbors downtown. But these things need to be addressed, especially when we hear things of, you know, this golf course is getting funding and this park is getting funding. The mayor, you expressed earlier about how this park, you know, those folks deserve a bathroom. And while I agree with that, the folks that are down on MLK also need a bathroom. So this doesn't seem like a heavy lift. As you know, there are many of us in the community that have organizations or part of organizations that are willing to come alongside and support through volunteer, as we were again, picking up trash and passing out water during the, the heat wave, and we continue to stand ready to be a partner with the city to serve these folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff Campbell.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, unfortunately, that trash can that they were talking about was, is, has now been taken away completely again. And I, I just wanted to add to that, that it's, it was the community of unhoused, my unhoused neighbors down there that have spent weeks organizing to pick up the trash because they think, you know, the people say we don't pick up our trash. And so they've all been pitching in everything they can to pick up the trash there. And then, and then they, you know, they pile it up and, and nobody else. So anyway, just thank God. Thank you for the community members for hauling away that garbage, but I, I agree with, you know, the first caller that it's, it's the city's responsibility and it's something we can do and providing toilets and trash is, is a basic community service, I think. You know, maybe you can just have the, the Parks Department expand, extend their area to include that area, you know. I don't know, but thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jordan, if you could state your name for the record.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hey, sorry about that. My name is Jordan Keller, and thank you all for having this. Good evening to you. You can still hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
You're usually just, okay, I kind of, kind of wait for responses sometimes. So I guess I'll just start ranting then sort of. I'm inspired by what they've said before me about addressing the homelessness situation and, and the behaviors that occur around that. And I think it would be easy to see why investing in at least the small things of maybe getting a job and getting somebody paid to clean up that area or things like that. So you're getting dual, you know, two birds sort of a thing. Real quickly, though, as for the behaviors and the reason we, you know, that we have all the trash piling up and the, you know, there's sometimes it's dangerous because there might be a drug, you know, paraphernalia and stuff. So in order to reduce those behaviors, we need to approach with showing them that we're going to be there. I mean, a toilet for sure. We, we should set up a, where this group, you and us, we begin exchanging emails as well about how we can invest even out of pocket or out of volunteer, more official volunteer between us, because we need to show them, and look, these people are exhausted and they're doing it. You know, you can, you see, you see it all the time. You hear them. We at least need to coordinate together to reduce this kind of thankless or rewardless volunteer work that's draining them. So let's get some emails going or something like that to coordinate on at least a toilet, because it's just little, little gestures of empathy. I sat with a gentleman there who had beautiful art and I, I should share it next time. And he cried just because we were grateful to see his art. So if you give just a little bit of kindness, it'll such a huge investment. Such a huge investment in, in behavior, see, because he, I guarantee you was much less likely to need to abuse drugs or anything like that after that. Huge, if you want to get scientific about a dose of endorphin, right, but the, we, the small things like the toilet and stuff. My God, it's so small. And we can talk about how we can help with that. But that would be a huge gesture. I guarantee some of them would cry, knowing that you guys are listening.
Okay, thank you, Jordan.
You know, they will, thank you. Last, last, thank you so much for having this public meeting because it's so vital that people have communication with their leaders. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing anyone else for public recognition. So with that, I am going to close, I see, Mayor, I'm going to close public recognition. And actually, a lot of what we just heard, Mayor Wheeler and I spoke about just yesterday. And there are, it, I will say it's not as quite as simple, and there are some issues, and we've got to figure out a way to navigate those. With that, I will turn it over to Mayor Wheeler.
Oh, thank you, Council President. And I thought it was important for anybody in the viewing audience to know that the city, the City of Bremerton is dedicated to full-time FTEs to patrol the entire downtown area twice a day to pick up all trash in public areas and to notify trash on, that is in private property, that it's a violation of our codes, and they've got to clean it up. And so, you know, it's, we're on it together. We, we have dedicated that Monday through Friday. And so I, I thought it was important to at least share that. The council, I'll be coming to you again to secure some funding for the Stand By Me program, support security at the Salvation Army. And Stand By Me is a private, is a nonprofit, Prince Community Health Services, is the, is the main sponsor of this program that helps people who are trying to work their way out of mental, you know, mental health issues, addiction and other issues that are associated all the way to housing and even up to being productive again as far as a job. And so what that does, what that allows us to do is also, as we have bathroom, with that, the bathroom is available, a, a clean, functioning bathroom that is, that is monitored along with the hygiene center. And of course, folks, if they need the shelter, it is there. And this is low barrier, very low, all of it's low barrier. So not a lot of restrictions other than you, you, you have to, you know, you can't commit a felony, you, you have to, you can't deal drugs and there are certain things to maintain that privilege, low barrier. So I'll have, I'm happy to share with you my experiences with, with the private owners who tried to do, to try to do these portable outhouses and what happened with that experiment to any one of you who wants to meet to discuss that. And and so we will keep working though to ensure that we have a low barrier access to a bathrooms. And of course, the parks, we, when we talk about parks and finally getting one, a decent one at Lulu Had, and that just means that they're now up there with Kiwanis Park, Evergreen Park, Blueberry Park and other parks in our area. I think, Council President.
Thank you, Vice President Chamberlain.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for the update. I would love to meet with you to discuss the data surrounding, you know, portable restrooms and also to find out the status, don't, about, I believe the Mission Gospel had a couple of portable shower units, or maybe I'm, maybe that's outdated information, but they're not being used right now. But I, I would love to set up a time to, to meet with you to discuss that. I think the real key time where bathrooms aren't accessible is the middle of the night. And having cleaned up alleys with needles and poop myself and having worked at the actual low barrier shelter, it's, it is a vital need for our community. Thank you so much for the work you're doing.
And what I could possibly do, and just so we don't leave the public hanging, hanging while we're all having these private conversations, I can share with you as, as a Salvation Army board member, we offered portable bathrooms outside in the parking lot before we had a full-time shelter established. And we did that as, as Salvation Army's, you know, tries to do is to be humane to, for the folks who didn't have shelter. And so the experiences we had were, were many, and they weren't good. The bathrooms were vandalized. They required twenty-four-hour day monitoring. There was, there was drug use, drug abuse. There was other, believe it or not, sometimes people would lock themselves in for the night. When they were required to be serviced once a week, they weren't in good shape. The companies do need to have a bathroom returned to them so they can clean it and return it back out to another group so they can make money. These bathrooms were not serviceable in some cases. Sometimes it could be meth. So needles being dumped into mass, you know, multiple and large amounts of needles being dumped into the, the bottom of the bathroom into the outhouse, processing those out became problematic. And so these are, these are just workers trying to go get a bathroom and take it back so they can clean it and get a new one in service. It, it didn't, it didn't fit a business model. So what, what you're proposing now is, and, and then again, we're proposing that somehow this would have to be either a private or a government-led operation to monitor a twenty-four-seven, monitor behaviors, monitor the whole thing in an area that I'm not sure. So all of these things, what I'm trying to say is, is fortunately, we have a twenty-four-hour day, seven-day-a-week low barrier shelter with minimum requirements to maintain access. Requirements that I believe we would probably have the same standard for. You wouldn't be able to use our bathrooms, government bathrooms for drugs, criminal activity. That, you couldn't vandalize them, and it would be the same standards we would require as a city government. And plus, I don't know who we'd get to do that right now. And I see we, we get.
May I just follow up? I apologize. I just had just, well, what I know about the Salvation Army is that they do lock their doors at nine. So they're not, they, they are a shelter that is and I believe near capacity, although it's summertime, so maybe they're not at capacity now.
They're not.
And so they're not at capacity now. Okay.
They're not.
And so it is a twenty-four-seven. However, they don't offer showers to everybody that comes in. And the bathrooms aren't accessible if you're outside, only if you're inside. But I, I, I definitely respect the barriers that you're talking about, and it is a, a, a large problem to work through. Thank you.
Yeah. And just to answer real quick, the condition for having a bathroom after seven PM and, and having one until seven AM the next morning is you do have to go into the shelter to, you know, rather than sleeping out side. And then the, the same, same barriers are required, same low barrier rules, you know, are, and now you, they're still the same.
All right. Thank you, Vice President. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Coughlin.
Cool. Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, recognize this is in my district. I've talked to a lot of folks down there, individuals and business owners, you know, I'm definitely aware of these issues, and I thank the members who spoke up tonight and for the help they're, they're doing in the community. And yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd love to be a part of that conversation with that in my district and look how I can contribute. So thank you for walking us through some options.
Yeah, I, I would be happy to attend that also. So maybe we could set something up, but I, not to, not to overwhelm you or anything, but to really see what we can come up with for ideas and solutions. All right. Anna, or sorry, Councilmember Muckler, lose track of what week it is.
Not to worry. I too would like to be part of that conversation. I found it's easy to forget how a person can become a, a non-person to so many. And yeah, so I would definitely like to be a part of that. I think that showing respect to the, to the people who are living along MLK. That'd be a good thing. I'd like to be part of that conversation. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Fry.
I know you're disappointed that I raised my hand. Um, you know, I know, but I have to say it. I think we can all agree. We hope that we don't ever have to say, you know, believe it or not, people lock themselves in these porta potties. We hope that we don't ever have to say, you know, believe it or not, people lock themselves in these porta potties. To spend the night. You know, that that is such a sad reality. But one that we really shouldn't wonder why. You know, it's desperation. So we've got huge problems. Obviously, we do. It sounds like study session material or whatever. I always go to community partners, not just Salvation Army can kit sap, you know. K R C, you know, help it all. So, you know, what do we do? What are? I I I agree, we got to find a solution. It can't just be, well, when they did this, it was terrible what we found and. We've got to find a solution. Because because people are, you know, having to sleep in bathrooms is not a reason why not to do it.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
And I'll I'll just close by saying I we if we were to offer and you've done a council, you've done a wonderful job. I don't know of any other councils have supported. The the funding that requires the partnerships that we've entered into. I mean, with K C R, the Salvation Army, Peninsula Community Health Services, kids on mental health. I mean, permanent housing authority. There I don't know of another city that has done what we've done. And and it's a it's a tremendous amount of work and resources. And the churches around here stepping up, there is an unbelievable amount of of human capital invested. And to support our most vulnerable. At the end of the day, we cannot make somebody against their will. Access these services. We can't do that. We there's no, there's not a law and I don't even know what a law would look like and, you know, and that's way beyond my pay grade. And what I do. All I can do is continue to offer more resources, working with you and make them as available as possible. All the way to multiplying our navigator programs when we meet people in their in crisis. Or adding the the mobile opioid addiction and mental health primary care treatment clinic, the mobile clinic. When our first responder fire departments interact with folks who could use these services. Get helping them right as they're in their lowest point, either going to the emergency room or jail. And so we've done, we are doing that. We are done. We've done that. We're doing it. We are there every day doing this. And so. If if you have other ideas and solutions and and want to talk about this in a round table forum. How we can expand the programs because we have capacity and all the programs I've just defined. They have capacity. They can take on more clients, more people. Okay, so. When we talk about what we more we can do. Look at what we're doing. And then we have to ask ourselves, are we successful? Are we reaching all these people? And you have to ask yourself why? We have to ask ourselves that. And I'll just I'll leave it at that. Council.
Very thank you. Yeah, we have to, so. Obviously, there's interest. I don't think there's a single person on council who doesn't want us to come up with a solution. But it has to be a workable solution. I'll maybe. Vice President Chamberlain and I can have a little conversation because we run the risk now of quorum. And should this go to of public safety or should this be a separate, you know, some time on upcoming? So we'll have to we'll have to figure that out and figure out how it fits. Again, our role is to fund things or to make legislation. And so this might be just some creative brainstorming with the mayor to see if we can maybe we have some ideas. That could help with some of the 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 obstacles of providing. Some of this and I have some in my head already. So with that being said, we are going to move on to general business.
Thank you. General Business Item five A. Public Works Agreement with Sound Pacific Construction LLC for the East Eleventh Street and Perry Avenue Reconstruction Project. Presenting tonight is Engineering Project Manager Vicki Grover.
Good evening, everyone, council members, members of the public. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to do a brief presentation. And so this evening I'm presenting to council tonight. We are looking to award the construction contract to the low bidder. For the eleventh and Perry project over in Minette. Here is the vicinity map of the project limits. And as you can see, it goes all the way north on Perry Avenue to East Seventeenth Street. Down to Eleventh Street, then over to Pitt and we go a little bit to the south of Eleventh on Perry as well. The scope of work includes full roadway and sidewalk reconstruction on both eleventh. And Perry Avenue. We are doing some drainage system upgrades. We're adding water quality units, one for a Perry and one for eleventh. We are adding the new sidewalk with compliant ADA ramps. We'll have put some pedestrian lighting on eleventh. We all have some festival lighting along eleventh, new benches, bike racks. We're going to do some. Calm traffic calming with some speed feedback signs and some miscellaneous utility work such as. Some sites who are replacements that we investigated early on and designed that that will get replaced. While we're doing the road construction projects. And so that there's a bike lane on Perry that will be on the east side, so going north up the hill. And then we'll have a bike lane as well on the south side of pair, I'm sorry, of eleventh street. This is our funding and budget information. That will look a little bit different than the last time we met during study session. And two of the note differences for council on this slide. Is that T I B agreed to give us another four hundred thousand dollars to address our shortfall. And we have found REIT money to make up that other difference, the nine hundred fifty two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. So the total amount revised is six million, six hundred and seventy five thousand to cover construction. Our construction management costs and then our engineering design by by the engineer of record through construction. Our current construction schedule is we'd like to have our bid award obviously be today, August third. With construction anticipated to start the week after Labor Day. And the contract working days are two hundred and ten days, which is approximately ten months of construction. And we're ready for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the. Public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will go to the council for a motion. Councilmember Coughlin.
Thank you, Council President. I move toward the contract to South Pacific Construction LLC for the East Eleventh Street and Perry Avenue Reconstruction Project. In the amount of five million, five hundred and seventy five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents, including sales tax. And authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the agreement with substantially the same terms and conditions as presented.
Councilmember Fry.
And I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We are open for discussion, Councilmember Coughlin.
Well, thanks, Council President. Yeah, that's a man fantastic job on getting the J V money. Great to see that that came through and that's going to take a chunk out of the. The extra cost that we weren't expecting. So I was really glad to see that and I'm glad to see the the refunds are able to be used for this. You know, after the discussion last week, a study session, you know, I know Perry, the work is needed, but the last thing I'd want to do is take. Take funds away from the residential street fund to fix up the street in my district. Because I know all the council members here can probably name several streets. Off the top of your head that, you know, that needs some attention to. So this seems like a great solution. And I just got to say again, kudos to Public Works on this project. I think it's going to be fantastic. Potholes on Perry is a term that will forever be seared into my brain from all the door knocking in the residents in that area. So. I'm so glad to see Perry get get fixed up. And the improvements to East Eleventh, I think is going to be such a boon to local businesses and just create an even more, you know, vibrant community space for Minette and the rest of the city. And when you look at that combined with Quincy Square and Charleston and East Side and all those getting connected, I think it just wanted many, many great projects going on. So thanks again to to Public Works. This seems like a seems like a good solution, but I look forward to hearing more feedback. Thank you all.
Councilmember Mockler.
Thanks, President Goodnow. Okay, I'm trying to get over my envy about people who have sidewalks and are getting better sidewalks. But I I I totally agree. And as I said last week, this Perry absolutely needs this work. And I I am happy that the design includes things that build community like benches. Festival lighting, it's not a huge part of the overall cost, but it will be a huge effect on the community as a whole. Congratulations. I'm so happy you guys got the funds from T I B and from REIT. That was really well done. I'm not going to jump into it now, but I would very much like to have a conversation. Soon about the two point two million surplus in the residential streets. Thank you and congratulations. May it happen.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I call for the question.
Councilmember Fry.
Yes.
Coughlin.
Yes.
Denny he.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes.
Younger.
Yes.
Chamberlain.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is item five B, ordinance number five four five three, amending chapter six point three two. Of the Birmingham Municipal Code entitled Noise Levels. Our presenter tonight is Assistant City Attorney Michael Ray. Oh, and it looks like and Assistant City Attorney Brett.
All right. Take it away.
I am going to start with a. By sharing my screen. And once again, I'm I'm going to highlight some of the changes or I should say all the changes that have been made between the last. Version of these ordinance that was presented to council and this proposed version. This, the main one is in our public disturbance noises section that is. Under subsection G and it creates an exemption within districts two and districts three. For music between the hours of three P M. And eleven P M. On Fridays and Saturdays. For a distance up to two hundred feet. Now, I just also wanted to note that this exemption was added in at the request of. Some council members at previous study sessions and then, of course, at the Public Safety Committee. This is what the committee, the exemption that the committee wanted to see. For music, it was not something that was done with the guidance of the administration. But this is the exemption that was added in there to allow for that extra bit of distance. So I'll scroll back up to the top. I just want to highlight that first. It is the primary change. The next is in this preamble section where some text was added. To highlight the fact that the decibel readings could be used either in the future when staff were trained to use them. Or by a third party consultant if it became necessary to. To use the decibel readers. And that is why that section remains in the ordinance at this point. Also, a discussion we had at Public Safety Committee, the pronouns that are included. It was really only two two definitions. Those have been changed to gender gender neutral pronouns. The definition plainly audible was added. That comes into play when enforcement is under public disturbance noises. The intent there was to add some clarity because I know there were some concerns by council members as to. You know, if someone had overly sensitive hearing or was hard of hearing, so this definition has been added in. And is referred to in several spots within public disturbance noises. And. And then again, as as we've discussed, the primary enforcement method would be through public disturbance noises. New section six point three two oh five oh. This highlighted text here was added in to clarify that even if a noise may not exceed the. Decibel readings, it can still be a violation under public disturbance noises. And then, as you'll see in almost each of the definitions under that section, as I as I just noted. The definition of plainly audible is included. Other than the exemption period, time period within districts two and three. The distance provision for each potential violation is at one hundred feet or greater. So if it is plainly audible from one hundred feet or greater, then it is a violation. Other than that, there was one additional exemption added in for school marching bands. Brought to our attention through discussions that that could potentially be considered a violation under the former proposed noise ordinance. So I don't think anyone wants that to be the case through a officially sanctioned school event. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen now and open it up for questions.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will go to the council for a motion. Vice President Chamberlain.
Thank you, President Goodnow. I move to pass ordinance number five four five three, amending chapter chapter six point three two. Of the Birmingham Municipal Code entitled Noise Ordinances.
Councilmember Denny.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're open for discussion. Seeing no further discussion. I'll call for the question.
Oh, as I thought I was unmuted. Councilmember Coughlin.
Yeah.
Denny he.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes.
Younger.
Yes.
Chamberlain.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. This concludes general business.
All right. That was a surprise. Council reports are next. Since this is the first council meeting of the month, we will start with District One, Council Vice President Jennifer Chamberlain.
Thank you, President Goodnow. I have no direct report for my district. I do want to do. A shout out because I noticed a really great change in District Two. There's a four way stop that I told Councilman Fry about at Callahan and Schley Olympus. So props to Public Works because I've seen a lot of flybys through there. I actually got honked at for stopping there and waiting. Because it was a four way stop and I didn't realize it was a four way stop. So I I really liked that change. I am excited that that council members want to have a discussion about bathrooms. And finding a solution to that need that we have in our community. There's a need for safe disposal in the nighttime of drug paraphernalia. There's a need for safe disposable, like safe human waste disposal. I mean, it's a safety issue for everybody, not just the folks who are having a lack of services, but also for the rest of the community. But it's it's a matter of dignity. There's other municipalities who have solutions and we are innovative. And we do things that like first, you know, first in the nation things. We're behind the times on this issue and I know that we have some innovative and creative solutions that we can come up with together. To solve this crisis. So, um, you know, there's a lot of things we can't do. Uh, for those who think that we have staff, we don't have staff that do this, by the way, public. We have a, a couple of members like hardworking staff, people that do our, um, you know, like our emails and, and agendas and things like that, but we don't have staff that can go out and solve this issue. Um, not as a city council. Um, we can create legislation, um, and but we can't enforce the legislation, right? We can approve funding, but um we really need um administration. Uh, and it sounds like we have a really willing administrator on board here to help us come up with a solution for this. Um, because it is, it's important. Um, it's an important issue. I, in other countries, they have public bathrooms, but here we rely on so many private services, you know, like let's, let's open it up. Let's have this discussion. Looking forward to collaborating with President Goodnow on this issue. Uh, thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Up next, uh from District Two, Councilmember Denise Fry.
Yes, uh very supportive, Vice President Chamberlain. Thank you uh for your leadership in this and for President Goodness leadership, getting together uh and uh seeing what we can come up with. I think we all would love to be a part of it, but there are obvious reasons why we can't be. Uh, so uh I'm super supportive uh of access to dignity. Wherever we can, wherever we can do it, and uh we have such great minds. This is a frustration, I think, to many of us. Such great minds uh in, in uh this country. Uh, and there, there's gotta be a solution out there for this. So, uh anyway, uh on to on, on, uh feeling really good about uh District Two. You know, I've been trying to schedule a meeting of some kind where uh maybe I could uh uh bring the constituents of, of District Two together. And I wanted to make sure that it coincided, you know, with, with what staff needs, and I certainly don't want them uh to ask them to be a part of something. It would just be a pain in the uh pain in the buttocks, as my eight year old grandson is saying. And we get, let him get a whole uh way with that because of Forrest Gump, of course. Um, but anyway, uh it looks like, uh, uh, you know, we've got the Safe Routes to School uh project uh that's uh coming up pretty quickly in, in District Two, uh which is so exciting. Uh, and then there's a, a bunch of pedestrian improvement uh and so forth uh right in that area on Sylvan. So, uh, it looks like the planets have come into an alignment for a district meeting. Stay tuned. Uh, and gosh, uh Councilmember Coughlin, Chamberlain, we're neighbors. If you want to join forces, we could do that, but we'll talk. Uh, I haven't even gotten together with Public Works to see when it might be uh good for them. I'm hoping like maybe fall. Uh, uh, but maybe it has to wait until after the first of the year. Who knows? But I see that as positive, a positive step forward. And just a shout out to finance. Thank you so much for the goodie bag that I got after. Yeah, uh Councilmember Chamberlain got it too. Believe it or not, I've been poring through this thing. I love this stuff. I love budgets because they tell me what the goals and what the priorities are of the city. Uh, and it's just been, uh, it's been really, uh, I won't say it's been fun, uh, but it's been so informative and enjoyable. How's that? And with that, that's it.
Thank you. Up next, uh District Three, Councilmember Jeff Coughlin.
All right. Yeah, let me echo that. A budget document really helps you make sense of the whole process. Couldn't resist the pun. Um, all right, district report. Uh, yeah, let me echo. Thanks so much to the, again, the folks who spoke up. Um, I, I walk by that area almost every day. I've lived real close. Um, and uh, yeah, uh, I've just talked to a lot of people in that area about what, what's going on. So, um, yeah, I could be chamberlain. You summed up well, Mayor. Thank you. Um, let's definitely keep, uh, keep talking and looking for, looking for solutions. Um, before the next slide, I forgot to make a slide for the West Sound Film, uh, West Sound of Film Festival that's going on. Um, and so I wanted to highlight that's going on this weekend down at the Roxy. Um, it's a great event that brings a lot of people to our area, um, really highlights Bremerton. So, um, check that out. And now on the next slide. Wanted to, um, especially fellow, fellow council members, but, but really anybody to highlight Green Drinks, um, which is a program. If you haven't been, it's really just a collection of um community leaders and activists, business owners, um, just really people who are active in the community. And that's a great way just to come out and talk. One of the uh caveats is that you're supposed to meet all these three people you never met before. Um, and it's called Green Drinks because you're supposed to bring your own cup to the event so that there's no disposable cups and keep it green. Uh, so the August eleventh one, and this happens every month, but August eleventh is at the turn of joy. So, um, definitely encourage you all to, to all to check that out. I found them really, uh, really great for meeting folks and uh uh getting ideas on the table. And then next slide. Also wanted to highlight that Music and Manette is still going on. Uh, it's been going every Thursday. There's at least several weeks left of it over in Manette and uh I picked this one out for Mikey the Rad Scientist, who is actually kind of a children's um science educator through song. Uh, and so I think that was a new addition to Music and Manette to have a, it's a really family friendly band. So I wanted to, to highlight that one. And then finally, uh, I just wanted to mention a great community meeting. Um, been going to a lot of different neighborhood groups, um, you know, ever since starting office and this should be our next slide here. Um, and there's a great, great group starting up uh in kind of the Evergreen Park area. Um, so we got together and just set up a tent at the end of uh the street here. Um, the highlight was this Maine Coon Cat on the right, um, that a neighbor owned. Uh, was definitely the star of the show. Um, but it was nice. My neighbors were able to get and meet each other. And then uh one of the main issues they wanted to highlight to talk about, and we'll go to the next and last slide, was uh Rota Vista Park, which if you're not familiar with it, is kind of a little hidden gem of a park in the city. So when the next slide loads here, uh, it's right on the waterfront, basically by the Warren Bridge. There we go. So in the, in the Google map photo, the Warren Bridge has like buckled left and right. So ignore that. Um, doesn't actually need that work yet, uh, but it's right on the edge of the water there and you kind of get to it at the end of Elizabeth here. And it, you know, it's nice. There's a, there's a bench down there. There's a view of the water. Um, when the tide's low, you can actually take a walking path towards under the bridge, connect to some other areas. Um, and so the residents in that area definitely enjoy it, but they certainly, you know, had some concerns over the years with um some safety down there. Um, you know, some, some potential drug use. And so they, they want to use the park more and they want to kind of have a conversation of of how that can, how that can happen and just make this area a little more usable. Um, so I wanted to relay that uh to council and everybody. And I know that, I know the parks has done a lot of work here over the years in conjunction with local volunteers and uh um, you know, we're getting there, but I think there's some more work to go, um, but it'd be great to see it, uh, see it as another prominent park one day. And that's it for me for my district. Thanks, y'all.
All right. Thank you. Next, District Four, Councilmember Quinn Denny.
Thank you, President Goodnow. Um, I just want to echo everybody basically on the council. Um, you know, there are, I, I think the, the statistic right now is five hundred and thirty or five hundred and forty thousand people that are houseless in the United States right now. Um, you know, this is, this is a very large, complex issue um that has to do with wealth inequality, that has to do with mental health services, that has to do with um drug epidemics. Um, you know, it's housing shortages. It's, it's, it's very, very complex and um, what gives me hope in a, I guess, four or five years or in my hope has kind of dwindled a little bit is that we have community members coming here not to say we don't want to see these folks, get them off our streets, lock them up, which many municipalities used to do. I lived in New Orleans and you didn't see homeless, and that was because they were all sitting in Orleans Parish Prison for trespass and loitering laws that are um deeply, deeply inhumane. And the Ninth Circuit finally recognized that and said, hey, this is a form of cruel and unusual punishment. These are, these are folks that are suffering from economic and mental health issues. Um, so it's just really heartening and I just want to express my sincere appreciation that, you know, the mayor wants to address this, the council wants to address this, community members want to address this, and it's not let's incarcerate. It's how do we help these folks as much as possible? Um, I think it was towards the end of last year, I, I was uh fortunate enough to get a tour of the Salvation Army uh by Captain Dana, I believe her name was. Okay. Uh, Mary, I know you're on the board and it, it was, it was just also really um, really profound to, to go and see the showers, to see like the very large kitchen, the um, you know, the rooms of winter coats and sleeping bags and and, and the fact that um so many community resources have been poured in, but also the partnership that, that we've, you know, helped form with, with security and mental health services. So, um, I know it's very frustrating and, and I think that a lot of people just, including myself, are, are paralyzed with what we've seen go happen in this country uh to, to cause so many of our fellow citizens to be houseless. Um, but I'm just really encouraged that we all want to do something and that's not just sweep the problem away and, and continue the systemic injustices. So I just want to say that. Um, I also want to give, um, switching the subject, uh District Four recently has been um kind of uh a flutter with parking complaints. I've been getting a lot of parking complaints of um, you know, Hulk vehicles and junk vehicles. Um, you know, we're, we're right next to the shipyard and a lot of folks um take parking spots here. Um, and then it's even more frustrating when, when, you know, there's certain vehicles that have, have not been removed or not ticketed or things like that. And I just want to thank uh the mayor, uh Melinda Monroe, Sarah Leggett, um, you know, Legal um for, you know, responding to some constituents that I know have, have, have made some complaints and looked to me for for certain answers and, and obviously my job's not to enforce, so I've informed the administration and um, yeah, I, I, I think everybody's been really impressed with how quickly things have been addressed as far as code enforcement and parking enforcement and, and I think uh it'll be nice to just continue that, that um that trend because parking is at a prime and, and we can't just have um abandoned vehicles on, on the streets of the district. So, thank you to the administration for that and uh all the folks that have helped on that. And that's everything. Thanks a lot, folks.
All right. Thank you. Uh, up next, District Six, Councilmember Anna Mottler.
Thanks, Mr. President. Okay, um, I have two slides and thanks to all of you for supporting the basic dignity and respect. Um, okay, so here's my slide. This is District Six. So, second, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, is there a way to zoom in on this so that everyone can read it? Anyhow, while we're waiting, because either A, there, there we go. Um, so last week, uh, it was stated that, you know, we have established our goals and priorities, and that's quite true. Um, I'm just going to go with the Merriam-Webster definition of a goal, which is the end toward which effort is directed. So a lot of our goals um have no one responsible for them. They're not on anyone else's agenda. They're not on a staff agenda. Um, so here, what I've done is my, you know, you, you all know I've only been on here since the end of February, but it's just some possible assignments of these goals so that work could be done on them. You all remember that at the beginning of the joint planning session, we had a, a huge list of of goals that had been handed down for years and years and years. So I was thinking perhaps we could work on some of these and, you know, start afresh uh in twenty twenty-three. So, um, shoot, I've got about four minutes left, President Goodnow?
Uh, three and a half.
All righty then. I'm setting it for three. Forgot to set the timer. So here what I've done is anything that was continued support for, I just graded out because, I mean, we're, someone is doing it. But for example, there's no, I can't think of where you would encourage the purchase of local goods and services. Um, like that would be something that a sustainability committee might address. Um, Public Works, Public Safety, Supporting Improvements for Pedestrian Safety, including Parks and Schools. As you can see, I've just chosen my top three to five issues. And I was thinking if I email this to you, to all of you, and you chose your top five, that we could do something like ranked choice voting and begin working on them, perhaps with a one hour long study session after the general meeting is over. Um, okay, hang on. If you could scroll down, please. So under affordable housing, um, lots of different places where this might be done. Um, audit committee, an ad hoc committee, which it seems like we're in the process of forming to exploring the feasibility of implementing findings of the March twenty twenty Affordable Housing Recommendations Report. Again, if there were a sustainability committee, it would definitely help develop policies that encourage environmental stewardship. Um, something that I, as far as I know, is that no department even has a person responsible for communications under outreach, access and transparency in government. But developing policies and implementing changes that encourage not just the public to be able to reach the city and us, but also for us and the city to be able to reach back out to people. Um, a less impenetrable webpage might be a, a possible way to go. Um, and then finally, I've got fifty-three seconds left. Yes. Um, equity in government, just really start working on this. We have two staff members. We can start working with that. We can start considering um BIPOC interns for our staff. If we can't, you know, influence the larger thing, we can do a small thing. So that was really it. I thought that it would be difficult to achieve goals when it isn't anybody's responsibility. It's what Garrett Harden calls the tragedy of the commons. It's something everybody wants to happen, but since there's no one in charge of making it so there's, yeah, it, it simply doesn't happen. So I guess really my question in my twenty seconds that I have left is is this something that interests anyone but me?
So, um, what I'll say is that this is something we, we normally have and it's normally something that uh you know, staff will do. And then if there's some questions, so I'll have, um, I'll have staff take a look at what they would have, they may have already done it. I'll have staff look at what they've assigned. And there's, so every year we take each goal and assign it to a committee or you know, or to the entire body. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at what we were at and here in, so.
Thanks, Mr. President.
And then, yeah, and then it, you know, it, we can, we can all have some input on it. So thanks for bringing that up. All right. Thank you for that. Um, up next, District Seven, Councilmember Eric Younger.
Thank you. So I was listening to our other council member reports and I just want to build on a, a couple of council members' comments. One is uh Councilmember Fry. That's an excellent idea to combine district meetings. We used to do that in years past, especially if you do not have a specific item in mind, like out in District Seven. We had kids have late cleanup. Well, then in that instance, you're going to get a huge turnout and last time we did that, we had like a hundred and fifty people. So I understand uh using the, the various resources of administration, but um out of respect for the staff, and I think that's the direction you were going, it's often helpful to combine district meetings with an adjacent district to best utilize scarce administration resources. So I applaud you for suggesting that. And it's something we used to do in the past. I used to do with Carol and Aaron's all the time in our district meetings. So something to think about council members. And then the other thing is Councilmember Mark, where I agree with you and I agree with President Goodnow about having um someone responsible for that. And I think President Goodow has addressed what we used to do in the past, and that was uh for each goal, we'd assign a committee and then council president at the time, or at least I used to, uh, on a quarterly basis during study sessions, say, where are we at on this? And so I think that might be a good best practice. In any case, that's more of a study session. I, so. Anyway, those are my comments for tonight. Everyone have a great evening.
Uh, thank you. Um, we have, and you know, back pre-COVID, uh, we would have our council goals on the wall of the um, of the council uh conference room. So, um, yeah, I just want to kind of reiterate the, you know, the conversations uh about um you know, treating people without housing, you know, humanely and um, yeah. And yeah, you know, we've, we've recognized some things and, you know, there wasn't solutions attached. So we need to, we need to really think outside the box and figure out ways to make some of this happen. You know, there may be some creative things we can come up with. You know, unfortunately, we kind of know what the problems are and we know what, what hasn't worked. And we just need to get creative there. Hey, I want to thank everybody who participated in the primary, right? Super important to be engaged in local politics. But you know, for us, it's, it's who we, who we're working with in Olympia, who's going to be supporting us as a city. So I appreciate everybody's participation who participated. And if you didn't, it's not too late. You can register to vote. You go to the state's website and find out all the information you need there. Councilmember Coughlin mentioned the West Sound Film Festival, which is housed out of the Roxy, but also uses a screen at Sea Film, our partners with Sea Film down the street too. So, and the festival partners with folks, you know, up and down the street, who really engages with Dog Days and Axe and Arrow and, you know, different, different places that are downtown. And I believe they're expecting a hundred and fifty filmmakers. And so it's a pretty, it's, it's, it's pretty cool. So West Sound Film Fest dot something, you guys can find it. Everybody's pretty smart here. Speaking of, Councilmember Coughlin, happy birthday, Jeff. I believe your birthday is tomorrow, unless that is your false information.
That is accurate. I'm turning twenty-two finally, so you know, it's a big one.
I also wanted to mention a couple of weeks ago, we had the Pride event. It's the first time we ever had to issue a quorum for a Pride event in Kitsap County. So, or, you know, so twenty-six years in the making, we had a quorum. It was great to see Mayor Wheeler was there and some of my fellow council members. We, however, were all running around so much that there was no, no worries of any, any potential discussions happening. But it was, it was a great day and it was, had a great turnout anyways. I wanted to just kind of mention that. All right. Let's see, up next, we have an executive session. So council members, it'd be a good time to find your link and I don't know where mine is. So I may be last. But council members will be in an executive session for thirty minutes to discuss pending litigation and potential litigation as allowed under RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one I. Action is anticipated. So we will be back in approximately, or we'll be back in thirty minutes if we don't extend. Thank you. All right, I called the meeting back to order and call upon the city attorney to read the motion.
Thank you, President Goodnow. So the motion would be moved to authorize the city attorney to initiate and pursue any necessary litigation and take any other necessary actions to abate any known nuisance and code violations on properties located at one, one, three, eight, North Calo Avenue, four, two, four, two, six, South Lafayette Avenue, eight, two, seven, Sixth Street, one, five, six, nine, Thompson Drive, three, eight, one, one, Ninth Street, and two, one, two, zero, two, one, one, six, and two, zero, one, zero, East Finney Bay Drive in Bremerton, Washington.
All right, Councilmember Denny.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Coughlin. We have a motion. Second, I call for the question.
Councilmember Denny.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes.
Younger.
Yes.
Chamberlain.
Respectfully abstain.
Fry.
Yes.
Coughlin.
Yes.
Good now.
Yes.
Motion carries six yeses, one abstention.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Our meetings will continue to be held remotely, including the next study session on Wednesday, August tenth at five P M. This concludes tonight's regular council meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.